Congratulations Finkley for your win as the South Carolina Black Pages 20 under 40.
I just want to say I love you and I appreciate everything you do.
Needing someone to represent you on the school board in Richland County one? Well, we have Jamie L. Divine with us as he discusses his campaign for Richland School District One.
Finished, there's some things I want to continue to be a part of.
All coming up next on the Michael Finkley Show. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Michael Finkley Show. I'm Michael Finkley. Today is Monday, November 2nd, 2020. Brand new month, brand new week, y'all. Let's get it. We are only a day away from Election Day. Truly standing in those lines, if you have not voted yet, saying those lines to make a difference in the world today. Let's do it. It's time. The time is now. If you have already, please subscribe to our YouTube channel, The Michael Finkley Show, and ring that bell notification and we'll send you an email saying, hey, new content is uploaded. Thank you so much to our future viewers, our viewers, our subscribers, our future subscribers. We are the Michael Finkley Show. We're here to inform, educate, and inspire you, bringing you shows that you need to hear and that you want to hear as well. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, y'all, like I was saying, Election Day is tomorrow. If you have not voted, please, 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 go vote, go vote, go vote. I've been talking with people ever since, you know, Election Day, um, you know, the, um, before you get out there, right? And it's just a mixture, all right? People, people are voting hardcore and summers, I'm not gonna vote. I'm like, what? And they're just giving me all these different reasons, but I know that's for me in my house. I'm going to vote. So let's make a difference, y'all. Let's make a difference. Just look at it like this. If you don't vote, that's the vote for the person that you don't want to be in office. That's how I see it. So I'm running, I'm making plans, I'm leaving work. Because I moved, I didn't have time to change my license over, so I had to go back home and vote. And so, which is an hour and a half away. So I'm leaving work and I'm going to spend the night with my parents and early that morning, I'm gonna go vote because I know that my vote counts. Let's do it. Let's make this difference. On today's show, we're excited because we're talking about voting. We have Mr. Jamie L. Divine with us and he is running for the school board of Richland County One in Columbia, South Carolina. I've been knowing him for a while and he's been doing some great work in Columbia, South Carolina, along with his wife, Tamika Isaac Divine as well. And so he just lays it all down on the line. What is this platform? Why is he running? Why is this his passion? Want to know more? Stay with us. We'll probably back. Next, we chat with Jamie L. Divine. We'll be right back. On the next Michael Finkley, it's Sports Friday. We're chatting with Mr. Corey Williams about being a mentor, owning a sports team, being a family man, and much more. Don't dare miss the next Michael Finkley. Looking for a mentoring program for your young male between the age of six and 18 in Columbia, South Carolina? Well, look no further. Big Homie Little Homie Mentoring Program is the program for you. Under the leadership of Mr. Jamal Shroud, Big Homie Little Homie is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that caters and mentors at rich youth that come from single parent homes. The organization caters to young males between the ages of six and 18 within the greater Columbia area. The organization is devoted to shaping and molding their life into great men of society. Big Homie Little Homie organizes male gatherings, discussions, and even educational assistance devoted to guiding and leading them into a positive light. Making a positive attitude will help in transforming their life regardless of what is experienced in life. For more information on Big Homie Little Homie Mentoring Program, visit our social media outlets, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. Hello, everybody. Welcome back to the Michael Finkley Show. We are celebrating awesome people that are doing awesome things for our communities today. And we have an awesome leader with us. He is a father. He's a husband. He is a community, community advocate as well. Ladies and gentlemen, introducing Mr. Jamie L. Divine. Jamie.
Hey, Michael, good to be here. Thank you so much for inviting me. Glad to be on your platform and spend some time with, with you on today. So thank you.
Definitely. Thank you so much for agreeing and, uh, we have, you have a lot going on between yourself and your wife. You have a lot happening. So let's just dive right in. Um, Jamie, when it comes to you, um, I've been viewing you and your, your platform and you as a person for so many years. You're a mentor in my mind. So thank you for that. Uh, we see that to, to serve, to be a leader, you have to serve. You have to be a servant and then that servant ultimately becomes a leader. Why are these two components important for you?
Well, as a young boy growing up in Aiken County, um, son of a preacher, a son of a minister. And so just seeing my father give so much back to the community, um, just and my mom worked in the local mills down in Aiken. And just growing up, we always were family focused, community oriented and community focused. And so my dad always taught us to give back, uh, whether it's church, whether it was through his Masonic temple, whether it was through other organizations and, um, things that he was a part of. We've always had that, um, those, those, those things that work together for our good. And what, and what I mean by that is that it's kind of like what you just said, those two items kind of go hand in, in hand, servant leadership and just doing, um, the work for the community. Um, I tell you, I was, uh, 25 years, years old. Uh, I was in my, uh, first house, uh, this, this is, uh, before I was married. And I asked the Lord, it's my 25th birthday. I said, I'm a quarter of a century old. I said, what is it that you want me to do? And just as you and I had this conversation today, he said to me, I want you to help and serve others. Just that's it. And that's what I said too. I said, wow. I was like, really? And that, and, and that was it. And I hadn't, you know, hadn't veered from, from that. I've always been involved, uh, you know, from student government back in high schools, student government back in, uh, in my days at Benedict College. Um, and so I've always, I always served the, the community, served those around me. So, so those are some of the reasons why, uh, even till this day, you know, some 20 something years, 30 something years later, I'm still in that servant leadership role.
Definitely, definitely. And it's served you well all these many years. And you are married to Ms. Tamika Isaac Divine and you all are a powerhouse. How has that relationship been professionally for you all?
So I tell you, it is, uh, it's a unique situation, uh, to have two elected officials from the same house. Um, and, uh, it is a challenge. Um, she's very opinionated. Uh, I am opinionated. Uh, but when we agree or disagree, shall I say, when we disagree, we just said, you know what? We're not going to come to terms on this one or two or three items. So let's just agree to, uh, disagree or have an impasse and let's move on. So professionally, uh, we've learned to just say, you know what? We're not gonna let it affect our marriage. We're not gonna let, let it affect us in individuals. And so we set that as a parameter, as our boundary. Uh, initially, uh, we got, when, once we got married and then once we got married and she, she was already elected official when we got married. We got married in 2003. She got elected in 2002. So she was already elected official. I did not run for the school board to 2008. It was my first time. And so I've been elected for the last 12 years and, uh, gonna run again this year. Uh, I hope the next couple of days I get reelected again to serve another four years. And so we just, um, we set some boundaries and parameters to say that we will not allow politics or anything, anyone come between us. Um, when we took our vows to each other, we said, you know, through, through good and bad, through, um, sickness and in health, um, let no man, you know, take asunder. That is a true statement. And now we've been tested. Don't get me wrong.
Of course.
We've been tested, but you know, through the test comes the testimony. And so anything that you do, I just believe that, um, um, God has put us here to set some examples for some other people. And I tell people, sometimes things happen to you, but not for you. It's for someone else to see how they dealt, how we dealt with it, to see how they can deal with certain things that happen in their lives. So, so just again, going back to your original question, on the professional level, we just want to make sure that we, um, always do what is right. Right. Um, uh, a good friend of mine, Vince Ford, who's a former board chair of Richland School District One, always say, if you do what's right, you sleep tight. And that's been a true, true statement for me. Now, he always said, if you do right, then you sleep tight. Um, so ever since then, again, we set those boundaries, we set those parameters, you know, we went through marriage counseling before we got married. Uh, I passed a Reverend Charles B. Jackson Senior over at the Brooklyn Baptist Church in West Columbia. Yes, sir. Awesome man. And so he said, set some parameters, set those boundaries and don't cross it, period. And so those are some things that we as a couple, um, have set for our marriage, even set for our different, um, um, schedules. You know, we, we literally have a meeting on Sundays to, to see what we need to do for the week for our three beautiful children. Uh, we, we have to. So we set those, those weekly schedules on Sunday to go Monday through Saturday. And then we set some, uh, quarterly goals, some six month goals, some yearly goals, and we go out five, 10, 15, 15 years and we set those goals just for us as a couple. We bring our kids in, we talk with them as a family and we say, this is where we want to be. What are your goals? And so we make it a family affair so they understand that when they become of age and, and, and hopefully get married and have their own families, um, in the future, they would do some of the things that, that we have done and be, um, be successful and, uh, good citizens, uh, coming up behind us.
Oh, that's amazing. I love that you're including everyone in this because, you know, that is the foundation. Communication is the foundation of anything that I believe that without it, we, we, we don't, we're not going to succeed. Definitely not going to succeed. So you mentioned your family, your, your girls, your son. Do they see, um, your, they see the parents as these political figures? Or they're, are they just like, oh, mom, oh, dad?
You know, that's a great question. So, uh, just before I came here, we were at another event, went home real quick, speak. And then I said, y'all, I gotta go back, um, to my office to do an interview. And they were like, Dad, it's Friday night. So Friday nights in our house is family night. Again, going back to the marriage counseling, uh, Reverend Jackson suggested that we have, he said, once you get your family, just have some days that are just unencumbered that just for your family. He, and he said, you won't see it now, but you'll see it later. And true to date, literally, we're so glad that we set Friday as our family night. Uh, we play games, whatever the girls want to do, we, we may go out to eat. Of course, pre-COVID, now we have food brought, brought into us. What, Friday is their night. If they want to go to the football games, basketball games, volleyball games, whatever they want to do, if it's something with Girl Scouts, if it's something, uh, they want to go, you know, we, we, we just do something with them every Friday night and they know Friday is family night. That's their unencumbered time. They get to spend with mama and daddy. And so, and it's good for us just to reconnect, just to say, hey, how's your week been? And, and we do it daily, but really we get to connect with the girls and say, hey, how's your week? How's, how's your day? What do you got planned, um, coming up? You know, tell me what's, what's going on. Like the, uh, other day, there was a meme or, 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 um, something that I, I saw. I didn't know what it was. It was M B H or M H B, M H something, but it meant like, mm-hmm, like, okay, I get it. Something like that. Like, oh yeah, that does make sense. But, but that's the time that they know they can just talk to us unencumbered and, and bless his soul. Jameson, he is age three now. And so at age three, he understands that even Friday is family night. Now, he doesn't understand that what Friday is, but he knows Friday, we can watch anything on the TV. And so, so he'll, so he'll say, I want to watch Disney. I want to watch, uh, Captain America. I want to watch Spider-Man, whatever it is. But he knows Friday is the time that we can kind of watch anything or, or we play, you know, we play a game, do popcorn or whatever it is. But we have Fridays as our unencumbered time for the children to do what they need to do. So I think they still see us as mom and dad. Sometimes it's as, as political, um, persons, but we take them to community meetings. Uh, show them, uh, pre, pre-COVID, we would take them to community meetings and, um, they would sit, uh, they would do, the girls would sit and do their homework. Jameson hasn't been as much, but prior, but prior to, the girls would sit, do their homework or do some type of work. Of course, they may have a gadget, may have a device, but it worked and they get to hear certain things from the community. And they get to see how community meetings work and get to see how community organizations work. And even our oldest now has been involved with some community organizing, um, just here a few weeks ago. Um, after Justice Gingberg passed, passed away, there was a, uh, a vigil on the steps of the state house. Our oldest, Tamiya, um, and some of her friends from AC Flor High School got together and did a vigil. Um, Perry Bradley from, um, BBC Building Better Communities helped them along the way and got some parental involvement. And they did this program, um, for Justice Ging, Gingberg and, 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 and her death, just to make sure that, um, they were politically engaged and socially engaged. And I was like, wow, this, these young people at age 14, 15 did this themselves. And I said, now, when I was four, 14, 15, I was just kind of chilling. I was, you know, doing whatever 15 year olds do. But, I mean, these young people are engaged at such a young, young age. So we are, uh, proud of Tamiya and I'm sure Jade will do something in the future, uh, similar to what she, she's done. And I'm sure that I call him Master Jameson. Master Jameson will do something also in the, uh, in the, uh, in the future too.
They're following the footsteps of their parents. What awesome examples they have. I love it. I love it. And so Jamie, all that you've been through thus far in life, from childhood to where you are now, who would you say are some of your major influences?
Uh, first, I would have to, of course, start with my parents. Um, as I tell people, parents are our first teachers. Um, we may not realize it, uh, from the time, you know, the child is here from the womb, um, to the chest or to the breast. Uh, I just believe that mom and dad sets that example. And if mom and dad may not be in the child's life, some adult at some point from age zero to about three has that child's best interest at heart. So that's the first teacher. And then I would have to say, uh, some of my teachers, uh, throughout school, um, K through 12 have been very influential in some of the things I've done. As I said earlier, I was always involved in student government. Um, I was involved with, uh, we had to, I remember growing up, we had Easter speeches, uh, Christmas speeches. We had, uh, we used to have, uh, summer enrichment programs in, in our church. I grew up in the church and the church really, really helped me become one of the young people that were leaders in our local area down in Aiken. And I got exposed and I tell people, exposure makes a difference. I got exposed to a lot of things as a young child. I came here to Benedict through YPCA, Young People Christian Assembly, and, um, got exposed to Benedict College in, in middle school. And I said, wow, this great big institution, African Americans, you know, I grew up in predominantly white area. Ninety percent of our school was, uh, was white, 10% was black. Yeah. And just to go on this campus where it was predominantly African Americans and these folk were doing some great phenomenal things like, I want to be a part of that. And so soon as I graduated from, um, high school, I came to Benedict College and been here, you know, the last almost 30 years. And so, um, I am grateful for, for that. Um, just some other influential people, uh, I fast forward just a little, little bit. I did mention one, one name was, of course, our brother Vince Ford, who's been very influential, uh, in my life. And I actually introduced, uh, Tamika and I officially to each other. So we give him all the credit for making sure that, 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 that happened. And so, uh, Brother Ford is still influential, you know, one of the few African Americans that's in the C-suite, as I like to say, at, uh, Prisma Health and has done a phenomenal job over the years, uh, in, in making sure that African Americans got, get or receive the healthcare that they need and always have given back to the community. Then I would have to say, um, my late father-in-law, Henry Isaac, uh, Tamika's dad was very, uh, influential for the short time that we got to know each other before he passed away, you know, and, and, and I would just watch this, this man get up every day, went to work. He was a, uh, insurance, uh, agent. He was also a realtor by the time I met with him. And I told him, I said, now that's the life I want to live. By the time he was like in his 50s, he would have a day where he would, um, it, it was, I would say he would work from maybe nine-ish to maybe three-ish. And that was it. And he was, he was at the house chilling for the rest of the day. And then he had, you know, streams of income still coming in. I said, you know what? That's what I want to be like. But, you know, so I saw that. Okay. So I was like, okay. And then, you know, from a spiritual perspective, Reverend Dr. Charles B. Jackson, uh, Reverend Jackson's been one of my, um, uh, great in, in influences in the, uh, in the spiritual realm. And, uh, and we give him all the thanks and the glory for that, you know, and, and just listening to other men, uh, in our community, uh, Dr. Ron Epps, who was our former superintendent in Richland School District One, um, definitely been a, a, a educational giant in this community as well as throughout this country. Has been a great in, influence. I got a brother, uh, in Charlotte, older brother in Charlotte, who has helped raise me, if you will, um, throughout my 40 something years of living. And so, you know, these are the guys that have made me who I am. And so I am proud and pleased that I turned out decent. Um, and so, you know, and just again, exposure at a young age, um, to various things in, in life. I remember as a kid going to Atlanta, going to Washington DC, going to Jacksonville, Florida, um, and just seeing different governmental type things. So I've been always fascinated about politics and about government and by, um, and by, and by like kind of sociology type, type things. So, yeah.
Oh, wow. And it shows great men, yes, behind you and it shows where you are today. This is why you are running again for the school board in Richland County One. And when we come back, this is what we're going to discuss. Coming up, Jamie tells us why he's running for school board. We'll be right back. The Finkley Experience is a education consulting firm that specializes in first generation education. We assist parents and their students with the college process. We train school administrators and we also partner with colleges and universities to assist with their first generation population. To learn more about our consulting firm and to purchase our book and workbook, please visit our website at thefinkleyexperience.com. Hi there, it's Finkley. Do you want to become the next guest on the Michael Finkley Show? Do you have an incredible story to inform, educate, and inspire others? Well, you can. Email us at Michael at thefinkleyexperience.com and follow us on our social media platforms. See you soon. Hello, everybody. Welcome back to the Michael Finkley Show. We are still chatting with none other than Jamie L. Divine. And Jamie, you are running again for the school board in Richland County One. You've been doing this for, uh, for a few years now. And why did you decide to run again?
Well, Michael, I tell you, um, there are some things that we have done as a district. Uh, we've come a ways and there's some things that we need to, uh, finish. There's some things I want to continue to be a part of. Uh, and I, and, and now just share just real quick with you and the audience. Um, there are three, uh, 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 platforms, areas that I would like to see, uh, the district continue to complete. Uh, one of those is that, that our early childhood, uh, program, um, is so important to, to me. Um, that's one of the things I ran on initially is to increase the number of childhood, um, programs and to expand those, um, opportunities for our young people. Cause what we know right now is about 30% of the young people come to us kindergarten ready, uh, according to state standards. And so we have a, in our strategic plan, uh, from 2019 to 2024 to increase that number, um, to double it, uh, to 60, 70% to get that percentage ready for school. And so we want to continue along those paths. We've started. Um, and so I want to continue with that. Then the other thing is, we want to make sure that we increase our graduation rate. And I'm proud to say that as of today, those numbers were released. And again, those numbers went up. Right now, we're hovering around 82% last year. Now we're about 83%. So it went up one percentage point, but, um, listen, every, every gain matters. And I tell people, this is, this is nothing that's just going to go from zero to a thousand. It's incremental. It's incremental each year. And so I'm, I'm, I'm proud of our school district. I'm proud of what our staff has done to ensure that all of our young people are college and career ready, that they graduate and they graduate to something that they can do, something that they can contribute to society on. And then lastly, um, I want to make sure that, that we continue with the multiple pathways or unique pathways, um, for our young people as they graduate. So we have various programs in Richland School District One. Uh, some of those includes, as for example, C. Johnson High School, we have a health magnet program where our young people graduate and they will then go into the, uh, in, in, into the healthcare field or into the medical field. Uh, at CH, and I'm sorry, not CH, at, um, uh, AC Flor High School, uh, our young people graduate with an IB International Bachelor Art Diploma, where they get college credit and they're ready for college. Uh, Drew High, High School, they have the capstone program where they will grad, graduate with a, a capstone, um, diploma in their hand. Laura Riston has the, uh, IBCC International Bachelor Art with the college and career ready. Uh, Columbia High now has, Columbia High School now has the cybersecurity, which is real big for us now. We partner with, uh, Fort Gordon, uh, in Augusta, along with Fort Jackson here, uh, in town to ensure that our young people get that cybersecurity, um, 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 information and, and, and some type of certification in that area because we know that is going to be the future, uh, when it comes to tech, technology. And then we talk about Kenan High School. Kenan has our STEM veterinarian program. We have a partnership with the governor's school where our young people can go part-time to, um, Kenan and then part-time through the governor's school. And then also, once they graduate, they have that, that degree or a search degree in veterinary. Then we also have the dual enrollment program through our other partner with, uh, Milllands Tech. So Milllands Tech, so you can come out of high school with a high school diploma and then come out with a associate degree from Milllands Tech. So that's our dual enrollment and it's an economic booster for our young people. So guess what? So instead of going to college for four years, now you're going to have to go for two and pay for two versus paying for four. And I wish I'd have had this opportunity back when I was going to school. It's an economic, it's an economic, uh, changer, game changer for our young people. We just got to get more of them to take advantage of it. And there's no cost to our students while they're in high school. Now, once they leave us, you know, they have to then pay, pay for college. We know that the college of, the cost of colleges continues to increase. But we know that it is so important that if we can give all of our young peoples some type of, um, uh, economic advantage, that's what we're going to try to do here at Richland School District One. And again, I want to continue some of those, those things that, that we've done, even with our KATE completers, career in technology, education, um, uh, persons that, that graduate, they graduate with a certification. And again, health magnets, they may graduate with a certification in barbering and cosmetology and diesel, diesel technology. Uh, we have mechanics that graduate from Richland School District One, making at 18, anywhere from $50,000 to $90,000 per year. 18 years, years old, a diesel mechanic making $50,000 to $90,000 a year. Then we also have the CDL program at Oakley High School. I forgot about, about that. That's our newest, um, pro, program. So commercial driver's license. We have young people that will graduate in the next several years. They can then go on to, um, own, and buy their own trucks and run cross-country with, um, transportation and logistics. And we know that that is also the future of, of our country. And so these young people, again, come out of, come out of high school, making 40, 50, 60, $70,000 a year. And we want to give them that economic and that career advantage. Um, and I tell people, everything's not based on a test, test score. Everybody's not going to college.
Yes.
And so we have to remember, we have to provide options and opportunities for all of our students. And that's what we're trying to do in Richland One. We want to make sure that all of our students get exactly what they need in order to ensure that they become a productive citizen, um, in this, in this global society in which we live.
Oh, my gosh. So much is happening over there at Richland One. I love it. I love it. And it has to continue. It must continue. As you said before, college is not for everybody and we have to realize that. But there are other avenues for students to be successful in their own right. In their own right. I love it. So during this election season, um, your opponent, um, talk about this aspect and how are you different from persons that are running against you? And has this been a, um, I guess, an easy or midway feeling for you in running this year?
I tell you, this year, uh, politics has been, uh, a little different than in years past. Uh, again, this, this will be my fourth time running. I ran in 2008, 2012, 2016, now again in 2020. Uh, things this, this year seem to be just a little bit different and different in the aspect that, um, we continue to run a positive campaign. Um, I think my opponent is, is a, is a, is a, uh, is a good person. I think she has some agents of hers who are overzealous. And so we have, uh, had that discussion. She and I both made a pledge at one of our town halls or one of the candidate forums that we would keep it positive. But I think some of her agents, as I mentioned to her in another forum, uh, have become overzealous. And, and of course, there have been some things put on Facebook and social media regarding to some signage and some other things that are, that have And, and of course, there have been some things put on Facebook and social media regarding some signage and some other things that are, that have been said that are just not true about me. But we will keep it positive. We've always run a positive campaign. And so, you know, I just believe that, uh, without, without a test, there's no testimony. And so I think that, uh, in the end, there will be a testimony of being positive, of doing what is right. And just making sure that you be you, don't change because of somebody else or because of something that is around you. You have to stand a- as the person of who you are, stand with your values, stand what you believe. And so I will continue to do that and I will make sure that those around me, uh, will continue to, to do that. I want to make sure that, uh, if, if anyone volunteers with us, anyone wants to be a part of our campaign or agent, we have this conversation. We tell them, no negative. We will not do things that, uh, to, that, that some other, uh, groups may do. We will not do, do that. If you do, do it, do it and I find out, you will no longer be a part of this campaign. Now, you may do some other campaigns, but you won't be a part of this camp, campaign. We're, we're here to serve. And being servants, that's what we do. We want to keep it positive. We listen. People want positive news. They don't want all this negative stuff that has happened. Uh, they don't want this gloom and doom. We want to make sure that we uplift the people. We give them what they need and that we make some changes. And again, as I tell people, uh, with the school district, we're not the, we're not, we're not where we ought to be, but we're headed in that direction. You know, there's no perfect organization. There's no perfect school district. There's no perfect person. But we strive every day towards that goal. We have goals. We have, um, strategic plans that we want to carry out each and every, every day. And each day incrementally, we are marching and trying to make strides to make that, to make that happen. But this year's, um, uh, overall atmosphere, uh, when it comes to politicking is a, is a little bit somber. Um, compared to years past is more of a challenge this, this year, uh, compared to some other years. But, uh, but, but, but we'll get through it. Um, we just got to be upbeat. We just got to continue to do what is right. And we got to continue to stand for what is right. And then when something's wrong, we got to speak out against it. Um, you know, one with courage is all it takes. One with courage is all it takes. So, so I've been, um, um, I've been pleased with the campaign that we have ran thus, thus far. And so we look forward to, um, being positive on November third and coming out with a victory on the other side. So I feel at, at this point.
I love it. I love it. And Jamie Forrest, once more, some of our fours, why should they vote for you?
They should vote for Jamie Devine because Jamie Devine wants to continue the work in Richland School District One. We want to continue to provide high quality, early childhood education. We want to make sure that all of our graduates who graduate, graduate, uh, college and career ready. And then finally, we want to make sure that all of our young people have unique pathways to get to where they want to be. So with that said, I would ask that, uh, those who are in Richland School District One seat two to vote for Jamie Devine for four more years to continue on, uh, the work and to work through this pandemic. And this is something new for all of us working through a pandemic. You know, I've been asked the question, well, how do you, how would you rate the district or grade the district? Um, going through a pandemic. And my response has always been, let me ask you a question. When was the last time we had a pandemic? Over a hundred years ago. So what do you care? Okay, none of us was, was here. There's not a playbook. There's not a guidebook. There's not anything to guide us other than the science, the, the circumstances and the data and common sense. And so when you look at those things coupled together with, um, people like me and you a hundred years ago. Which nowhere in the position that we are at now. So how do we compare that to where we are today? You cannot.
Yeah.
Now, have we made some mistakes along the way? Sure. But do we have a plan? We do. Have we followed our plan? We have. Now, some folk won't ever be happy with you, no matter what you do. But we're going to follow our plan based off the science, the circumstances and the data. It's, it was a plan put together by over a hundred persons, uh, throughout the community, uh, that helped us with this plan. And then we meet with those persons, well, the district meets with those persons, um, uh, as, as needed to update, to change, to, to get, uh, feedback on their thoughts on, are, is, is, is the plan going well? Do we need to change something? Do we need to push forward, go back? And so it's a leaving, it's a living, breathing document that was thoroughly put together, thoroughly vetted. And so again, you won't make everybody happy, but I'm not trying to make everybody happy. I'm just trying to do what is right for the majority of our students, number one. A majority of our faculty, number two. And then for this greater Columbia community, Richland School District One in which we serve. So again, this, 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 this pandemic has changed a lot of things, but it's also exposed a lot of things, which is a good thing. Exposure is good, uh, can be good. So we're not, again, we're not shying away from those things that were exposed. I.e. broadband, uh, in the, in, in certain parts of, of town that we did not have, uh, with the technology. You know, we, we bought, we purchased computers for three through five, I'm sorry, third through twelfth grade years past. Now we're going pre-K through second grade. So all of our students in Richland School District One, all twenty-three, twenty-four thousand students will have a device here soon, as you can imagine. As, as you can imagine, it is, it really is. You know, I will commend this community in allowing us to purchase computers, particularly for our pre-K through second grade. Uh, young people. But we are back in school, pre-K through second grade. We started, um, uh, October twenty-sixth. Bring back our, uh, third through, uh, twelfth grade, uh, November the fourth. And so, you know, again, that's part of the plan that we have to put in place. And incrementally, when it's appropriate, we will continue to either add or delete depending on, um, or pull back depending on, um, how this virus goes. We know there's an uptick now. Uh, so, so the committee, the administration is continuing to meet to see how best we still, um, um, serve our students, serve our teachers and then serve this greater Columbia community. So it's a, it's a balancing act, but you know, um, steady leadership is what it takes. And relational leadership is what it takes. It takes more now to be a leader, I think, than it did in years past. And so we continue to have relational leadership. And so we want to make sure that that continues, um, on, on this school board going, going forward.
Alrighty, everyone, you heard it here. You heard it here. Jamie L. Devine, go vote. If you haven't already, go vote, please. Alright, voting makes a difference. Jamie, thank you so much for being on.
Yes, sir.
Telling your story. Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you, man. I, this is, this has been fun. This has been great. I appreciate, listen, I appreciate you because it's a person like you who give us an opportunity and a platform to get our message out, to get our word out. And I appreciate you, a graduate of a great HBCU, although one of our rivalries over Allen. We are blessed that we can even have those type of, um, um, schools to serve this greater community and to serve young people. Right where, right where they, they are. And again, as you said earlier, you've been an English major. I'm an English major. So there, those are some things that we have in, uh, in common. So again, again, thank you, thank you, thank you. And, uh, anything we can do to assist in the future, please let us know.
Will do.
On the next Michael Finkley, it's Sports Friday. We're chatting with Mr. Corey Williams about being a mentor, owning a sports team, being a family man and much more. Don't forget, Mr. Next Michael Finkley. Hello, everybody. Welcome back to the Michael Finkley Show. So you know the question I'm going to ask you. What did you learn? Leave comments below and let's have a conversation there. Thank you so much, Jamie Devine, for being on today. Thank you for just telling us like it is, why you're running and your platform and why persons choose you for an additional four years. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We really appreciate you. Really, really do. And we wish you well tomorrow at the polls. So Wednesday, Wednesday, we're doing a awesome, awesome little thing that we started a few weeks ago. We're doing a Rewind Wednesday. So we are going to show you a show from previously in this season. So which show will it be? Hmm, you have to wait till Wednesday to find out. So that's happening on Wednesday. On Friday, we will have Mr. Corey Williams with us. Now Corey and I went to college together. Awesome dude, mentor. He owns his own sports team. He's doing some great work in the community there in Florida and we're so excited for him. So he tells it all. Don't miss Friday's show. If you haven't already, please subscribe to our YouTube channel, Michael Finkley Show, and ring that bell notification. And we'll see you in an email saying, hey, new content's uploaded. Thank you so much for watching. If you'd love to be a guest as well, please email us at michael@thefinkleyexperience.com. Now, thank you so much for watching. And guess what? We'll see you Friday. And don't forget Wednesday, Rewind Wednesday. Have a good one.